... meeting for Wednesday, February 23rd, City of Hendersonville City Council. And we will be having presentations rearranging the order that they, on the agenda that was sent out initially, because we are going to start out learning about other communities and what they have learned. Mr. Khan, if you would go ahead and make the introductions and lead it off.
Thank you, Mayor Volk. Mayor Volk, members of City Council, it's my distinct pleasure to recognize four distinguished gentlemen this afternoon to bring us their insight from two growing communities across the state of North Carolina, and that would be Mayor Protem Dan Vest from the town of Holly, excuse me, Dan Berry from the town of Holly Springs, and City Manager Randy Harrington, or Town Manager Randy Harrington from Holly Springs, as well as Mayor John Higdon from the town of Matthews, and Town Manager for five more days, Hazen Blodgett. So Hazen, congratulations on your retirement there. So these gentlemen are joining us. I know both of these managers, and they're very professional and do a very good job for their communities, and felt like that they could provide, along with their distinguished elected officials, some insight about how they have dealt with growth in their community through the years. I've sent them some background information about Hendersonville and the growth that we're going through, and have some questions that we'll ask. I'll try to moderate the presentations a little bit to keep things flowing and keep things going. So, but before we do that, I thought it'd be important for you as our City Council to introduce yourselves, and maybe start with the mayor, and mayor, you can decide which way you want to go around the room, but introduce yourself to our guest, and then we'll start the question and answer part, period.
Okay, I'm Barbara Volk, mayor of the city of Hendersonville, have been for about 12 years now. Lindsay Simpson.
Hi there, I'm Lindsay Simpson. I am currently the Mayor Protem of City Council, and I served on council for a little over two years.
Hi, I'm Debbie Roundtree, council member newly elected.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Hensley. I am a Hendersonville City Council member and have been serving for a little over two years.
Good afternoon, I'm Jerry Smith, and I have been on council for the last 12 years.
Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. And again, gentlemen, thank you for joining us today. The way I'd like to start, if it's okay with you, I'll start with Mayor Protem Berry, if that's okay, and talk a little bit, maybe tell us your story about Holly Springs and the growth that y'all have seen. Those of us from North Carolina, you know, familiar with the Raleigh area, know that you've seen tremendous growth over the last, you know, 30 years or so, but maybe start and tell us a little bit about your story. And then, once we hear from Holly Springs, I'll ask the same question of Mayor Higdon in Matthews. So, Dan, if you don't mind?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, John, I appreciate it. Just one administrative note, Randy actually got stuck in Colorado on vacation, I don't know if he told you. So he was stranded, he's actually on an airplane on his way back to North Carolina now. So Daniel Weeks is one of our assistant town managers, and he's here with me today stepping in Randy's seat. So we will do our best to cover and do our best Randy Harrington impression, but unfortunately he couldn't be here today.
Well, I didn't think that looked like Randy, but you know, on Zoom, you never can tell, so Daniel, glad to have you.
Yes. We thought he told you, so our apologies if he did not.
Thank you, John. Yeah, glad to be here. I know I'm not as good-looking as Randy or as rich as Randy, but hopefully I'll be able to give some insight to the group today. And just FYI, we do have a PowerPoint presentation to help kind of guide our message. So if you want us to share that now, we can, or we can wait, your preference.
You could go ahead and do that now if you want to, and just, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Okay, can everybody see the screen here?
Yes, now we can, yes.
Okay. So yeah, just a title slide here, just so you get a sense for what you're viewing. This is the securest pharmaceutical plant in Holly Springs in our business park. And this was formerly Novartis, and there's a lot of trees here now, but this photo was taken probably a couple of years ago, because now there's beginning to be a lot of activity in this area. So you know what you're looking at here. I'll let Mayor Protem introduce himself.
Yeah, sure. So really excited to be here today, and we're thankful for the opportunity to share a little bit about our town, and hopefully it's helpful for all of you. I'm Dan Berry, I've been on the council now for five years, I just re-elected in my second term. I served on several of our different council committees. I was a prior planning board member, as well as an HOA president, and a volunteer firefighter in Pennsylvania. I moved to Holly Springs nine years ago, and started a family here, and it's been great for us both personally and professionally.
And again, I am Daniel Weeks, one of two assistant town managers in Holly Springs. I've been assistant manager since 2015, although I've been with the town since 2006 in different capacities. And I oversee budget strategy and innovation, economic development, fire, IT, parks, recreation, and police. And just to orient everybody on the call here, you know, where is Holly Springs? You can see here on the map, the dark blue, darker blue area is Wake County. You can see our relationship to Raleigh. Holly Springs is located in southwestern Wake County, on the border with Apex, Cary, and Fuquay Marina is not showing up on this map, but Fuquay. And then really, our fourth boundary is kind of like, is Duke Energy. We're somewhat constrained, we have annexation agreement lines, but we're somewhat bordered on all sides by different entities. One thing to note on this map is you can see where I-540, there's a ring going around Raleigh, and it currently, the terminus stops in Holly Springs, but it's under construction, and in a couple of years, that will be open all the way around the southeastern side, all the way to Knightdale. You can see how, you can see our proximity also to Research Triangle Park and RDU Airport. And I'll say, if there are any questions along the way, feel free to jump in and ask. So just a little bit about our town history. We honestly, we kind of have a far history that predates the Civil War, and then, I'd say, not a lot occurred, not a lot of folks came back after the Civil War, and there was somewhat of a gap in our history, and then probably midway through the 20th century, we kind of had a resurgence. We were a traditional African-American community at that point in time. In the 1960s, the town installed its first streetlights and constructed a public water system. Our first sewer plant was installed in 1985, which we began to attract some industry in town. And honestly, what we would call our modern growth period really began in about 1990, shortly after. We only had 908 people in Holly Springs in 1990, predominantly low-income community, quite a bit of poverty, and there was a developer that decided to build Sunset Ridge, a neighborhood in Holly Springs, a golf course community, and that's kind of what sparked the growth here. Water and sewer infrastructure was installed in the late 80s to make that possible. So our growth rate from 1990 to 2000, I can't remember the percentage, but we went, we were like 10,000 people in year 2000, so we were the fastest-growing municipality in the state using census data during that time. You can see now, we're around the 45,000-person mark, and we are, as Mayor Berry can attest, you know, we are experiencing a lot of suburban community development, and also a lot of commercial and industrial development. And then, just a quick snapshot, Holly Springs, we expect to be around 52,000 people in the next few years, and we have ranked the number one safest city in the nation to sell a home recently by Money Magazine. Couple stats that we're very proud of here are, we consistently rank in the top two or three, but past few years, it's been number one safest city in North Carolina, actually for six years in a row here. And also, the one below, our fire department, a couple of years back, attained ISO rating of one, which puts us in the top 1% of fire departments nationally. That translates into lower insurance premiums for folks that invest in Holly Springs.
So Daniel mentioned the rapid growth we've been facing in Holly Springs, and like I mentioned, it's almost 10 years for me in North Carolina. When I moved to Holly Springs, there were 24,000 people here in 2012, so in the last almost 10 years, it's grown to about 45,000 people, almost 100%, and will be 50,000 within the next six to 12 months. So the growth has not stopped, and one of the things that we've been more deliberate about in the last four years is trying to balance that growth a lot better in our tax base between residential and commercial. I think for, you know, from the 1990s until about, you know, the mid 2010s, the focus was on residential growth and just expanding the community at all costs. And once we had a lot of that growth coming in, we needed to be more deliberate about planning for commercial growth and really trying to make ourselves more than a bedroom community. Being surrounded by things like RTP in Raleigh, big employment centers, and in Durham, a lot of our residents live in Holly Springs, but they commute out of town to go to work. So our focus was not only growing employment, but also creating retail and restaurant-type shops and commercial shops for our residents to partake within Holly Springs and not have to leave our town. So they don't have to go to Cary or go to Apex or go to Raleigh to get what they need, they can stay within Holly Springs and find the goods or the services that they need. So over the past 24 months, we've had a pretty strong run of economic development announcements. You know, one of them was UNC Health building a hospital here in Holly Springs, a $150 million project, and that's the only hospital in southwestern Wake County. Cary's the closest hospital. Apex has a small satellite, but Cary's the closest big hospital system to us. And this is something that's been planned for a while, and we went through the certificate and need process back in the early 2000s. It took about 20 years to finally get off the ground, but that hospital opened this past November and has been a great asset to our community and is also a strong employer. They brought about 700 jobs, half of which came from within their network, and then the other half were hired here locally. We've also had development plans approved for a Lowe's Home Improvement store, and a Wegmans, and being from the Northeast for me, that's huge. Getting a Wegmans down here is awesome. So it'll be a large grocer and highly competitive with some of the other ones we have, but also a very attractive one. And given our community's growth, we do have a lot of people that come from other places and have experienced Wegmans, so it was strongly supported when they came up for approval. They haven't started building yet, but it's on the docket. Hopefully, we see some progress in the next 12 months on that one. If we move up to the top of the screen, the Calvert Ice Sports is, this used to be some Duke Energy land, actually, and Daniel mentioned, you know, Duke Energy surrounding us, and that's because of the Harris Nuclear Plant that's down there where the lake is, towards the bottom left of the screen. That lake is used to cool the reactor, and because of, you know, when they built that plant, they had to have a certain amount of land to buffer the reactor being down there. But over time, their expansion plans have changed, and they don't require as much buffer around the plant. So up at the far northwest part of our town where the Calvert Sportsplex will be, there's also a large residential development around there, Carolina Springs, which is in the orange right there where he's pointing to. There'll be about 1,700 residential units surrounded by almost 300,000 or 400,000 square feet of commercial space, and then we've got this Calvert Ice Sports complex. Ice Sports are becoming pretty popular here in North Carolina, and around us, you know, Cary and Garner have some of the ice skating rinks, and this is a huge need in our area, and we're thrilled that it's a private venture coming into Holly Springs, and look forward to that progress. You can jump to the next slide, because it'll talk about the other ones. The two biggest ones that are most recent within the last six months was Fujifilm Diocent Biotechnology has announced a $2 billion taxable investment in Holly Springs, bringing 800 jobs. It'll be the largest cell culture contract manufacturing facility in North America. Their ground has been broken, they are underway with site work, and their planned opening is in 2025. And not long after Fujifilm announced they were coming here, Amgen, also a worldwide biotechnology leader, announced they'll be coming to Holly Springs with a $550 million taxable investment and 350 new jobs, and they'll be producing life-saving medications right here in Holly Springs, and that's also planned to open in 2025. Continuing on the life sciences thread, this is something our community's planned for for 25 years, and it's all seemed to come together in the last, you know, 12 to 18 months. Everything has started to click for us in a really strong way. But the yield is coming to our town as well, and this will be, instead of those bigger, we call them whales, those bigger economic development projects, that you could go and try for, you know, 20 times, and if you get one over a 10-year period, you might be lucky. This one is more intentional to get those smaller fish in the sea, the smaller businesses or startups, entrepreneurs or labs, or other type of biotechnology companies that are smaller in scale, and this will be flex space for manufacturing labs and offices. On the 200-acre life science campus being built by Crescent Communities out of Charlotte, they've done a lot of mixed-use projects there, and were attracted to Holly Springs when they saw some of the other life science growth taking place here, our strong workforce that's right here in town, and the quality of life that we offer. The last thing I'll hit on quickly is our downtown growth. So we never really had a downtown in Holly Springs. We had Town Hall, and it's something our residents had asked for for years and years and years. And back in 2017, we finally moved the needle with a public-private partnership, getting some investment from private investors who wanted to build a building and relocate their businesses downtown. The town had some land, so we got involved in some land swaps. The town put up about $9 million to build a parking garage and redo all this road network that you see in the picture, the crosswalks, the crossstreets, the one-way streets, were all redone as part of this project for the building that's, you know, farthest away from the front of the picture. And then shortly on the heels of that, a second entrepreneur came along and wanted to expand their business, but they decided, you know what, we can actually make this bigger than just the 10,000 square feet that we need, and they built another 50,000 square feet, which is this block building, another public-private partnership that was able to join in and take advantage of the same taxpayer-funded improvements that we were already supporting. So this was really a unique success, where it took both public industry and private industry to come together and really create ourselves a downtown that we hadn't had. Holly Springs doesn't have the organic, natural buildings from history that we create in ice downtown. So we had to build it from the ground up, and now it's one of our shining pieces of our town, and it's packed on weekends and Friday nights, and is a huge attraction for a lot of our residents.
For the sake of time, I'm going to skip this slide here, because I think we touched on these points, and a couple more slides that we do have. So we were asked, John, I think we were asked things that we would do again.
So Mayor Protem, if I can, can we stop right here for a minute, and let's invite the folks from Matthews to join in and tell us their story, and then we'll come back to the questions. Is that okay with you guys, if we kind of tag-team a little bit so we can involve Hazen and Mayor Higdon? Is that okay with you?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. So Mayor Higdon and Hazen, if you don't mind, maybe share with us a little bit about your story, and then we'll, and then we'll jump into some of the other questions after that, so if you don't mind. And welcome again, thank you.
Sure, I'll start. Again, my name is John Higdon. I served for three terms as a commissioner in Matthews, and then ran for mayor and was elected, and am now serving in my second term. I grew up in the Charlotte area, went to high school in Charlotte, and Matthews is a small town to the southeast of Charlotte. For those of you, I think everybody's familiar with where we located. Growing up in Charlotte in the 70s, I recall, you know, driving through Matthews, and if you blinked twice, you might miss the town. Very similar to Holly Springs, we had a very small population in those days, maybe a few thousand in the 70s, and we're currently at about 35,000, so we've grown quite a bit in that amount of time. Some of the things we're known for here, headquarters of the Harris Teeter grocery chain is here, Family Dollar headquarters used to be here until they got sold to Dollar Tree. We have a Novant Hospital here that's pretty large, and one of the largest in the region, and they just announced a $100 million-plus addition to their complex that they have here in town. So, you know, kind of the things that we're known for in the town is we have a recently-built sportsplex we're very proud of, right off of I-485, lots of opportunities for recreation there. And we're especially proud of that because it was, the county wanted to use it for a dump site, and we were able to change our mind and build a sportsplex instead. One of the things that people really like in this area that's been a big boon to us here is, probably about 10 years ago, we started building greenways, and they were somewhat controversial at the time, but we've worked with the Carolina Thread Trail folks, and we've built greenways all over town. As a matter of fact, where I'm sitting in my home office, I'm overlooking a greenway that runs literally adjacent to my backyard. So they're very well utilized, and people come from all over to ride their bikes and enjoy nature on our greenways. And we continue to add to that network with a goal of being able to, you know, go all over town safely without getting on a major thoroughfare. I think that the big boom to our economy, where we really took off, occurred about 10 years ago, and like, I was speaking to Commissioner Smith yesterday, like Holly Springs, one of the things that kind of launched it was microbreweries or a few bars downtown. They used to say at Matthews that we rolled the sidewalks up at 5:00 PM, and we were closed on the weekends, and now, similar to Holly Springs, we have a great booming vibrant downtown area that's just packed all the time with restaurants, bars, retail shops, things like that. They just really seem to snowball over the last 10 years or so. We have a very strong veterans community here. We just opened a veterans park that's very popular. We have about 2,000 veterans that live in Matthews out of our 35,000 or so population, and the veterans park has been very well liked as a welcome addition. Our downtown area, one of the things we're really proud of is we have maintained a lot of our historic buildings, and so there's a lot of history that you can see that dates back all the way to the turn of the century. We have the proverbial, you know, 100-plus-year-old hardware store where the guys play checkos around the potbelly stove, kind of gives us a good small-town feel. That Renfro's Hardware opened in 1900, so that's kind of interesting. And then a lot of the surrounding buildings in our downtown core are historic and date back, some of them over 100 years as well. So we're very proud that we're able to do that and re-appropriate them for other purposes, you know, old banks or post offices, things like that are now retail shops. Hazen, if you'd like to join in. Unfortunately, we don't have a PowerPoint today, but I do have Hazen for a few more days.
Thank you for joining y'all. And Holly Springs' presentation was very impressive. We, you know, our Town Hall is about 12 miles from downtown Charlotte, like Trade and Triumph in Charlotte, so we are a first-tier, well, you know, subdivision's really not an accurate word, but we are very close to their downtown, and we grew, and we are surrounded by Charlotte, basically on three sides. We got 17 square miles, and we're not going to grow anymore. We've annexed all of our annexable property. So we, you know, it looks like Holly Springs to me is kind of its own entity with its own real vibrant economic development, where we don't have much available land. You know, probably our largest vacant tract, I don't know, 100 acres, 150 acres maybe, and you'd have to probably assemble that. So we are lucky that we do have like two blocks of historic buildings, and then 20 years ago, the town bought an old shopping center that was adjacent to downtown, and then we did a public-private partnership and built Town Hall, library below it, Town Hall above it. That has been a great, a great relationship. I don't know if y'all have a county library, but we got one, and it's been a good, good relationship. And then we have four buildings and about five acre, probably about, probably about 80,000 square footed feet of retail space that's adjacent. It's 20 years old, it's designed to look like it's 1920s, and then we have the bona fide 1920s stuff. And then, I guess the other thing I'd add is we have a 100-year-old high school, that's now a community center, we redid it, and that's very vibrant, and we have a park that's probably two and a half acres, maybe three acres downtown. And I think it's true for all three of our cities, man, if we put something out there, people are going to show up. Food Truck Fridays, you know, we have the Charlotte Symphony once a year, and people are just itching to get out with their families, and they want to drink a beer too. You know, I think so many folks, I guess, think of honky-tonks and fights or whatever. No, these are just people that want to relax, drink a craft beer, listen to music, have their kids with them, and, you know, go home at 9 o'clock. So, you know, it is a great lifestyle, and folks choose our place just like they choose Holly Springs, and I know they're choosing Hendersonville as well.
Hazen, while we have you and Mayor Higdon here, is there anything that you would say, you know, really contributed to your success, some things that you would do again? you know, really contributed to your success, some things that you would do again, you know, as far as investments and maybe it's the, what you did downtown, but are there some things you really are proud of that you would, you think you would do again to make things, the way things are today in Matthews?
I guess there are a couple of things. The mayor mentions the sportsplex. We partnered with the county, but the county did the heavy lifting financially, but it's an 11-field, multi, you know, rectangular fields. There's no baseball or softball out there, but lacrosse, soccer, football, frisbee, ultimate frisbee, really anything that you can play on a rectangular field and there's 11 of those fields. Then we have a 4,000-seat stadium that's gotten used by the professional soccer team in Charlotte. So, you know, I think the mayor's right. We've started to tie things together with greenways, but we're having to retrofit and I, you know, it's, so we need to continue on that. I think what we did downtown is key. Folks love feeling connected to a community. That's really what I think, that's what they're seeking. They move somewhere and they want to feel like this is their community. They're not just in a subdivision with a HOA and, you know, maybe the HOA's got a pool and tennis courts, but people are looking for something genuine and I think that's what we're all for.
Yeah. If I could just add to that, I think this is probably a pretty obvious statement, but we started really with zoning here in the seventies. Prior to that, like most southern towns, you know, there wasn't really any zoning. But I think you can really tell that a lot of thought, a lot of long-range planning has gone into how our town is built and you've, I remember a few years ago, I was, I think up in Ohio or something and I was driving through a town like, you know, just a mishmash of everything, really no planning, strip malls here, residences there. Everything has been really well thought out with the boards, you know, over many decades and even so much as Independence Boulevard or Highway 74 passes through Matthews and we were planning for the eventual reality of that becoming basically a highway. We were planning for that 30 and 40 years ago and how we used our land and how we set land aside and built parallel roads to Highway 74. So, I think that's been really useful is that long-range vision and where do we want to be when we grow up? People were thinking about that back in the eighties and nineties and I think a lot of it's come to fruition now. So, we stand on the shoulders of a lot of people that came before us that were kind of visionary.
Thank you very much. And let's jump back to Holly Springs. Mayor Protem, Barry and Daniel, some of the things that, you know, that you would do again, that you credit your success where you are today. So, and feel free to jump back to that PowerPoint if you need to there, Daniel.
Okay. Thank you, John. I think maybe we'll just do this verbally here. But yeah, thank you again. You know, one of the, I had four things kind of on the list here. Invest in water and sewer. One of the biggest things Holly Springs has done that's paved the way for success is seize on opportunities to increase our water capacity and sewer treatment capacity in town when we could. The town gets its water from the Cape Fear River down in Lillington in Harnett County, the county just south of us. And without that water capacity, there's no way we could have sustained this residential growth and attracted some of these larger industries and so on. So, seizing, seizing those opportunities was, has been key for us. Investing in reclaimed water, it's been really, really good for us for a couple of reasons. One, the more reclaimed water you're able to use, the less potable water you have to use so your water capacity goes further. And for those that may not be familiar with reclaimed water, John, I'm assuming Hendersonville, do you guys have reclaimed water?
We've used it very little, but we do have our own wastewater treatment facility. So, yeah, we've not used a lot.
Gotcha. So, we invested in this reclaimed water process and so one of the other benefits is it's been very attractive to some of these larger companies looking to locate in town. They like it from, so they can use it in their process operations. It's cheaper. They like it from a sustainability standpoint, both Fujifilm, Diocent, which is a Danish company, and then Amgen out of California. They really like the fact that they have this reclaimed option. So, that's one of the things we would definitely do again. Creating an in-house economic development department is something we would do over again. We were probably the smallest town in Wake County, but they didn't have a economic development department and we said, let's do this. That's, you know, the chamber's there for certain purposes, but let's bring on somebody here to go out and recruit some of these larger industries that's paid dividends many times over. And also, Mayor Protem and Barry mentioned 25 years we've been on this vision. We did a study 25 years ago that suggested we were in the right path for going after pharmaceutical companies, the biotech industry and so on. For many years, our neighbors probably laughed at us, you know, we didn't have anything to show for it. Yeah, Holly Springs is going to recruit the next, you know, Bristol-Myers Squibb. Well, lo and behold, in 2006, we did with Novartis and then in 2021, like Mayor Protem said, it was a, it was a banner year for us. So, staying true to that vision, no matter what your neighbors may think or others may think is key. A couple of little small things, we built our own fiber network back in 2015 timeframe and the moral of that story is, is we connected all of our town facilities through a 17-mile fiber network, so it was for our town facilities. And the debt service on that project was the exact same amount per year that we were paying Time Warner Cable. But yet after the 10-year period was up, we were going to own our own system and now we've had other entities come in and buy dark fiber that we put in and they're doing things with that. So, that's an idea. Development partnerships, you know, getting developers that come in. You guys talked about experiencing a lot of residential development, making sure they're paying their fair share through partnerships, allowing them to build infrastructure so it doesn't fall on your backs there in Hendersonville. System development fees, I'm not sure where, you know, you guys are at with that, but ensuring that you have a healthy system development fee for developers who are wanting to come into Hendersonville to support that, those infrastructure needs that you're going to have to face down the road. I'll stop there. I'll turn it over to Mayor Protem for anything that I may have missed.
No, I think you covered it well, Daniel. I can't, I can't underestimate the development partnerships, you know. That's kind of one of the reasons I got into this business was my time on the planning board and watching all these projects take place and existing residents never had a benefit from development. All we got was detriment and more headaches and more island neighborhoods that weren't connected. So, the development community has coined a moniker for me and it's Mr. Sidewalk because I don't let people skip by on small things like sidewalks on projects. That $150 million hospital, there was a 30-foot stretch of sidewalk that would have connected their property through another property up to a crosswalk and their development plan came to front of us and they weren't offering to build that sidewalk. And I had not nice things to say at their earring and we added that as a condition of their development plan to build that sidewalk and I drove past it on my way here today. They just finished it two weeks ago and I smile here to here every time I drive by and I can't wait to see people walking on it. But development does not always pay its way when it comes to growth and Holly Springs has experienced that and we still do. Our infrastructure doesn't support where we at, where we are at now with the amount of houses we have, the businesses that we have. We're continually catching up and we can't solely rely on taxpayers to fix that gap and the General Assembly certainly isn't fixing that gap with DOT to build more roads either. So, we've had to get creative with development and use them as partners, hold high standards and, you know, if some don't want to play, then we have to be patient and wait for the right partner to come along that has that mutually beneficial objective for our town and meets the vision that we have for the type of growth that we want to experience.
Those are great points. We'll stay right here if you don't mind, Dan and Daniel. Let's, with that being said, what would you, what would you do differently? So, are there some things, you know, Mayor Protem, you mentioned some things that as far as development not carrying their weight, but, you know, what would you, are there some things you would do differently from where you are today if you could go back, you know, 20 years?
Yeah. One of the key things we highlighted was transportation investments a lot earlier. And, you know, the first thing, when I was, when I was on the planning board, another thing that led me to run for office was the fact that our town was making decisions off of plans, comprehensive transportation plans and growth plans that were 12 years old. And this was in, you know, 2015 to 2017 and I just thought it was crazy that we could make development decisions off of a plan that was that old and didn't even reflect what our community looked like. So, you know, one of the first things I pushed for upon getting into office was instituting a five-year rolling schedule of all of our main plans. So, we have updated our comprehensive land use plan now. We changed it from being a largely density-driven plan to more a character-based plan, which talks a lot about what we want to see, what the town to look and feel like. So, I know we get a lot of, hey, we were a small town, now we've blossomed into this big town of 45,000 people, going to be 50,000 people very soon. How do we keep that small-town charm? And one of the ways we try to manage that is through our land use plan, talking more about character. What do neighborhoods look like? What does neighborhood residential and commercial look like? What does our conservation neighborhoods look like to preserve trees? We passed the tree ordinance in 2018 to help preserve trees and stop clear-cutting with developers. We put a lot of those controls in place to help us manage the growth. But what we didn't have was, you know, good planning around the transportation side before that. So, I think, you know, in 2018, we passed a transportation bond, our voters passed it by a 60 to 40 margin for $40 million to give us municipal money so we could go out and build roads. That's something we should have done 10 or 15 years before we did it in 2018. So, we definitely could have been different and better at how we approached the road planning and knowing what the growth we were experiencing, where we would end up and how we got to some of the gridlock we have today. The other thing I would say is geographic equity for parks. So, our park system and our park programs are one of the number one reasons people move to Holly Springs today. And a lot of the parks we have are kind of centered around the same places in town and our town has continued to grow and expand into areas where there is more developable land. And what we didn't do a great job as, a great job that was being deliberate in those expansion areas and buying parkland and setting it aside. So, we've been playing catch-up on that. It's been a huge area of emphasis the past four or five years for us and we have bought, you know, recently in an area of town that was fast-growing, we bought 56 acres that was ripe for development and, you know, the family couldn't get the right deal with the developer. They came to the town and we got a deal done there to preserve that property. It'll be the first park in that part of town. And we've, again, updated our Parks and Rec Master Plan. That was one of the five plans that we put on that schedule, land use, transportation, Parks and Rec. Every five years, one of those things will get updated and we just finished our Parks Plan maybe six to eight, 12 months ago, something like that. So, we've identified pockets of town where we don't have parkland and are looking at opportunities to acquire it in those areas. And I think the second, the last thing I'd have is forge stronger relationships. So, we've been pretty good, you know, the past 12 months about building relationships with our state elected officials, our federal delegations and our county delegation. We formed a legislative action committee, which I serve on with another council member. We act as the conduit for the town council to these other elected bodies and we go and lobby on behalf of our town's legislative agenda, try and advance our political, I guess, political agenda, legislative agenda more than anything and how we can get state-level policies or federal policies, grants, dollars, anything like that. And, you know, up until the last 12 months, we hadn't had strong connection there and that is something that we've benefited from in addition to our neighbors. You know, Apex and Fuqua, Cary, we all faced the same problems here in Southern Wake County and Cary is a behemoth. There are 160,000 people, everybody here doesn't want to be like Cary, want to be a small town, but Cary's learned a lot along the way and we haven't had a strong connection as kind of a coalition in Southern Wake to partner with each other and advance our mutual, you know, issues. And now we do. We've established a lot of those connections and have a lot of great partnerships, which is leading us to a stronger planning for our future. And the last thing I'll say is communications. You know, as our town grew, more and more people became interested, more and more people had things to say. They all wanted a different channel to do it. Give anybody a keyboard and you'll hear all sorts of different things. And, you know, we certainly find ourselves right in the middle of that, but allowing that communication to take place and giving an avenue for the public to have input was absolutely key, certainly in our development process because a lot was going on and, you know, as a resident, 610 homes were going up behind my neighborhood and we found out about it because I got a random, you know, rezoning sign at the front of our neighborhood and we had no idea what it meant, did some research and then figured it out. But people want to know. I mean, people that come into the town, they're very curious about what's going on and what's going to be built at that corner. So, the town has made a lot of changes and restructuring our departments and our staff to have a dedicated communications staff now and we've made a lot of changes to our website. We're looking at implementing a 311 center to create that stronger communication between the customer and the services that we provide as a town entity.
Those are great points. Thank you. Daniel, anything you want to add or you?
I would simply just piggyback on one thing that Mayor Protem said is, 10, 15 years ago, we were not having regular meetings with our neighbors. I look at Hendersonville and I see Flat Rock and Valley Hill and Law Park and Mills River and so on. We did not have a good relationship with our neighbors. Annexation agreement lines, boundaries, they didn't exist or if they were, they were loose, they were loosely followed. But over the past five or 10 years, it's paid dividends. We have, the manager here has monthly or bi-monthly meetings with a couple of those other managers. You know, it's a lot easier to walk through and navigate tough issues whenever you have that good relationship as opposed to how it used to be here.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Higden and Hazen, what would you do differently as far as your experience there in Matthews?
I think we have some similar issues that our friends in Holly Springs have. One thing that we have started really that was initiated by Charlotte Mayor Vi Lyles is the Mecklenburg County Mayors Get Together on a regular basis and that's something that we didn't do in the past and for that very reason, because the issues that affect Matthews also affect Charlotte and Mint Hill and Bunville, et cetera. Couple of things that I'll let Hazen add as well, a couple of things I think that we could have done better is Matthews has really become a victim of our own success as far as our property evaluations. And so, the average house here, last I know, was, you know, approaching like $450,000 for single-family residents. And so, we have really, I know affordable housing is a buzz term that's used all over the state, but it's something that I wish we would have done a better job with earlier because we're trying to dip our toes in that pond now and provide affordable housing for people that live here, but many of our municipal employees can't afford to live in Matthews because it's so expensive now. Land values have soared, housing values have soared. So, being more proactive years ago and setting aside some areas that, working on some partnerships with affordable housing would have been helpful. We are getting into that now, but it's, we're pretty late in the game, so I wish we'd have done that earlier. Another issue that's come up, just a lot of emails, I was thinking from constituents, is the glut of fiber companies that are coming into town and they don't use a single conduit. And so, I wish we had maybe addressed that legislatively earlier because we have, you know, Google Fiber coming in and tearing up all of our streets and then AT&amp;T comes in, does the same thing and then another company comes in, does the same thing. Instead of banging down one conduit and pulling the fiber for the whole town, I wish we could have foreseen that and maybe done something to stop that. Hazen, what do you have to add?
Yeah, all good points. It's fun to listen to everybody talk too. I mean, one of our, some of our big growth was in the seventies and eighties. We were really the first town in Mecklenburg County to grow significantly and we got a ton of neighborhoods that are cul-de-sac. We got a lot of neighborhoods that went one entrance in, one way out, dump onto one major road. You know, I guess everybody wanted to live in their bubbles and we're filled with cul-de-sacs all over town and I live on a cul-de-sac too and I get the lack of traffic, but man, it hurts with congestion. You know, I think also we were just so car-centric. I mean, you know, everybody, we did conditional zoning, we were early to the whatever day with conditional zoning, but what also happened was we would have large swaths of just residential area. You know, no commercial in here and that was an anathema, kind of still is, but what we're doing is we're making everybody get in their car. That's really what we're doing. And, you know, everybody in the room is a different age, but man, I spent a lot of time growing up outside on my bicycle and you know you don't see that like you used to, but I'm not blending it on cul-de-sacs or, you know, the car. But, you know, I think, I think, I think we got to think different about other little pods that really are good for the, you know, people can walk to them. You know, it's just not, you're driving a ton of vehicles to, you know, I don't know if it's a coffee shop or maybe a craft brewery, I don't know what that would I don't know what that would look like, but I think it's an interesting discussion to have. Wider sidewalks, you know? We got five-foot sidewalks, man. And I see Charlotte, they've got some 10-foot sidewalks. And I know they're expensive to build. Makes all the difference in the world, because a lot of people want to get out on their bikes these days, or walk. And then you got the electric scooters, and then you got the electric bikes. And, you know, in some ways, that's, can be a hazard on the sidewalk, but you're potentially taking a car off the street, too. Um, and then, of course, greenways, right? We're all, now we're having to dig back in, and like the mayor said, the first one we built, and you, people swore that people were gonna run up and down the greenway with a TV on their shoulder. You know, total, total, uh, fear mongering. And of course, that's not happening. People love them. And, but to have to retrofit that is difficult. And, you know, if I could wear my magic wand and do it from the beginning, um, uh, you know, we also, hindsight's always 20/20, by the way. But if we could have figured out, like, let's drive people around, let's make cars drive around our downtown center, what a great thing to do. And of course, we rely on DMT and things are very expensive, but any way we could draw, you know, could think, oh, you know, this is gonna be our center of the town. We want to make sure there's not just local traffic through it as much, make it easy for people to get around the town. But for us, you know, we back up to Union County, and Union County's exploding, and guess what? They go from Union County to downtown Charlotte, and a lot of them drive like the Union County. Um, I think the mayor's great point about, about affordable housing. And I, I would, I would also make something about diversity sensitivity. I mean, you know, it was not on my radar, I don't know, five years ago, four years ago. And, you know, I mean, I, I see lots of people doing water work. And we, we've got a heritage historic neighborhood, and we got, we built a, a, a greenway to the, and it's, we've done some growth, and it's, uh, you know, you stop and you learn about the historic African-American community. But, you know, I, I guess I do wonder myself, like, why wasn't that on my radar 10 years ago, 15 years ago, really even five years ago? So, uh, and, and of course, hindsight's 20/20. Oh, I got one more. Relationship with the General Assembly. You know, I hear about all the good things, even like tree ordinances, right? You gotta fight for those things. There was a guy that proposed doing away with tree ordinances, or unless they were, or they had to be legislatively given, right? You couldn't, and so, and I know all the members, you know, it's an easy thing for us to grumble about, but the General Assembly is not our friend. And they really haven't been our friend for 15 years. And I, I guess I'd wear my wand and I guess put different people there.
Mayor, you can, you can tell that Hazen is a short timer.
He is always at the job.
You can tell. You're on the way up the door, Hazen. I can see it.
He's not holding back.
I've been pretty much this way a long time.
I know. I know. I know.
If I could add, uh, one more thing as well, um, there, there was a time, I think, and one of the reasons I ran for becoming elected official was my concern about clearcutting with developers. And we had a tree ordinance, but it wasn't being, um, necessarily followed too well. One of the reasons I became an elected official. But I have argued, um, all along for setting aside parkland. And we've had a series of times in our, in our community where that wasn't a priority for, for any of the elected officials. And, uh, so, so recently, we, like in Holly Springs, we bought a, a 40-acre tract of land that we want to use, like, as a passive park. And I, I think as our populations continue to grow, especially in, in Matthews, we got very limited land. Setting aside those peacefuler races for, for folks is so very important. And it, they're just, the areas that we've done that to, the greenways and the, the different parks that we've set aside are so very much enjoyed by our citizens. And I think it's very important and sometimes overlooked in a rush to develop every square inch of land that you have. I mean, set aside those, those, uh, you know, even if it's only 10 acres or five acres, but some green space that people can, you know, kind of decompressing. Has, it's really improved, I think, the quality of life in Matthews. I wish we had done more of that earlier when it was easier to afford. Land is so expensive now. Um, but I would highly recommend that, even in Hendersonville, when you're near the, the beautiful mountains, et cetera, it's still nice to have someplace in town that you can go to very easily and enjoy nature a little bit.
Thank you so much. I have one more question, but I'm gonna hold my question to the, to the very end. I just want to open it up to our council members and see if any of our council members have any questions of, of your peers in Holly Springs or, um, Matthews. And, and I'm sure Hazen and Daniel, from a staff perspective, um, you can get a different point of view from your manager here sitting at the table. So, um, feel free to ask them, um, questions there. But, um, I'll open up to our council and see if you have any questions.
Okay. I've got a question for each of them, um, related, but, but kind of different, uh, depending on the, the jurisdiction. In Holly Springs, you're getting a lot of housing and commercial and industrial development. Do you have within your city limits that developable land, or are you annexing? And if you're annexing, why do they choose to be in Holly Springs?
Sure. Um, yeah, so, we, we do have developable land within our town limits already. Uh, so, we are one of the only towns in Southern Wake County that has a large swath of open land. Uh, and that is an attractive thing for, for folks that are coming into our town with development interests. And we also leverage what is the extraterritorial jurisdiction around us. So, it's stuff that is not yet annexed into the town limits, but it's under our planning jurisdiction. So, we, we rule if they come in to rezone it or develop it, it follows our development procedures and it follows our zoning ordinances rather than the county's. And that's an agreement that all municipalities have with, with Wake County for areas that surround them that aren't incorporated, um, in, in Wake County at least. Um, we, we do require as part of a rezoning that if you're going to rezone your property, that you need to annex into the town and connect to our utilities. In exchange for that, so that's water, sewer, uh, reused water or the reclaimed water, if, if you, you know, use that for irrigation or something like that, and it's in your service area, then it's a required connection. Uh, and that's all part of, you know, becoming part of the town of Holly Springs. So, 99% of the times, it's voluntary. Of course, the General Assembly doesn't give us the ability to do enclave annexations or closed donut holes or anything like that. Um, so, it is, it is all voluntary, and it's largely because people are developing property that's contiguous to the town limits. And the annexation just allows us to expand our ETJ and grow the town limit, uh, as the development happens.
Okay.
And, and mayor, to piggyback on that, to the, to the question of kind of why are they doing that, is, is like Mayor Proton said, it is for the water and sewer utilities, um, you know, and for the density that these developers are able to achieve if they're on water and sewer as opposed to well, well-insepted.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and as far as Matthews, you don't have a lot of room to grow. What are you looking toward? I, I know what we have in Hendersonville, you know, the Baptist Church buys another piece of property for a parking lot, so that comes off the tax rolls. If you're not able to annex and expand, what are you looking at as far as being able to provide services, raising taxes, um, that sort of thing? And I, I have spent many, many hours at the Matthews Sports Complex watching my grandson play soccer. So, I'm very familiar with that.
I'll take a stab at it and turn it over to, to Hazen. One of the things we're doing, yes, we have very little. I would say we're 90-plus percent built out here. So, uh, we're building something, we either, we're re-appropriating a building or taking it down and, and building something different. On the, those large swaths of land that we have left, our, our town council is being very picky on, on picking up what we allow to be done, uh, in those areas. We're looking at, uh, higher-density, multi-use, uh, developments, as, as, uh, Hazen mentioned earlier, so that we don't just make a, an island of residential. Uh, we have one developer now that's proposing kind of a, you know, a town center that has a lot of amenities, so people can, you know, park their car and walk to a, a restaurant or a post office or a dry cleaner, all, all within where they live. As far as, as taxes, yeah, it's been very tricky. Matthews has, for decades, had a very conservative, uh, government style, and we've kept our taxes, uh, Hazen will probably say artificially low. They're, they're really low, and Hazen has to do a lot of magic to make our budget work out. Uh, we are, uh, probably, um, on the cusp of, of having to, uh, reevaluate our, our tax rate, because it's specifically for salaries for our employees, specifically with fire and police, living next to Charlotte, when they keep raising their, their police and fire salaries very much higher. It's just really hard to compete, uh, to, to compete with Charlotte or even some of the surrounding communities who are forever chasing that, those salaries. Hazen, what would you like to add?
To his, I think it's the key question. And one penny in Matthews raises $500,000. Our tax rate is 29 cents. I mean, I hear, I hear Holly Springs, I'll bet you y'all, it's higher than ours. Um, and I, I used to work, I used to be the town, city manager in Whiteville, North Carolina, and a lady said, "The problem with Whiteville is you think poor." And she didn't mean it meanly, but I do think we all have a, we're all so fiscally conservative, which is really good, but, man, you know, uh, I do think it can bite you. And like, like we've approved some multifamily, well, a kind of a lot of multifamily stuff. And some of it's pretty impressive, but, you know, when the houses are $400-plus thousand like the mayor said, are we creating a generation that's gonna be renters? That really scares me. I mean, that's not the American dream. Um, and, and then, then our folks don't want density, you know, density, you know, like, we have houses on five-acre lots, you know, and they're probably built 30 or 40 years ago. And I know the neighbors, as soon as someone, developer comes and says, "Look, I want to put four houses on here," or something, neighbors are gonna scream about it. But, you know, I guess I'd rather have four $300,000 houses than one $10,000 house from a community benefit standpoint. So, I, I think that balancing, it's, it's like the public wants everything, and the board is stuck with making these tough decisions, trying to educate people that you cannot have it all. And, um, density is still, we, we have not embraced, the community has not embraced density. I mean, it's two of our new board members, I think, they haven't talked about it much, Mayor, but I think they were like, no new development? Well, okay, guess what? Services, you know, their services go up, so we're looking at taxes. One other thing I would also say, and I hope y'all don't do this, but we absorb solid waste. We're not in the water-sweater business, and we absorb, uh, we absorb the solid waste fee, all within our taxes. That's like, that would probably be equivalent to about four cents on the tax rate, but that is all absorbed through the general fund. We don't, you know, we don't send anybody out of monthly bill for solid waste. And that is a way to free up, you know, from a manager's perspective. There's, there's kind of maybe low-hanging fruit, but we still get a lot of pushback. The only other thing I would say, and I think all three of these towns are in it, but I empathize with Hendersonville particularly, y'all have created a great town. Now, people are flocking to your great town. And like, are you supposed to be, do a less good job so people won't be attracted, so attracted to Hendersonville? But, but the horse is out of the barn, right? I mean, you know, John probably should have done a worse job, and maybe y'all wouldn't be in this spot. But, um, uh, it's, it's, uh, you know, it's, and you guys could have, you know, mountains, y'all have marginal land around you. It's, you know, but, but Henderson's a great place. I've been through it, too. It's, it's great.
Yeah, just to add on to that, uh, our friends in the north of the county, in Mecklenburg County, in Cornelius, their entire board got kicked out of office because they had agreed to some multifamily housing. And, and the new people that ran were, you know, kind of aficionados, but they said, you know, "We're, we're not gonna allow any development. We're gonna stop all the development in Cornelius," which I'm pretty sure is illegal. Uh, there is, it's, it's a really walk on the razor's edge on, on balancing density and, and your tax rate and, and the income that you can make, and then the, maintain the quality of life as well.
Thank you all. I appreciate your, your responses to those questions. Anyone else?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, Mayor Higdon, when Hazen leaves, John Connick is not available. That's why I'll point that out. We don't want you to make any trips up here to smooth old John, and he, next thing I know, he's down to Matthews.
And we're having some interviews tomorrow and, uh...
Um, my first question is gonna be, uh, to Mr. Berry. Um, so, um, if you were to define what Holly Springs is today, or maybe when you started on council, um, you know, there's all kind of terms they use in demographics and urban studies about how to define where we are and, or how to find where your city fits. Um, what would you do to define your city as far as how it sets, um, your philosophy or your goals for what Holly Springs has become and maybe is continuing to be?
Yeah, sure. So, we, um, we've tried to be pretty deliberate about that, knowing who we are. I mean, one of my mantras is, look, we can be, we can be great at a few things, but we can't be great at everything. So, let's figure out what we can be great at and double down on those things and really make sure we can stay great at them, and we know that those are things that attract people to our town. One of them I talked about is parks and recreation in our athletics programming. We have really, really strong parks and rec programs. Uh, we need more space. We, we don't have enough gym space for basketball, volleyball. Uh, we've, you know, we have a similar story to Matthews when it comes to the county wanting to put a dump in your backyard. We have a, we have the Wake County landfill just up the road from us, and, um, their borrow pit for that landfill was, uh, you know, a piece of land that we were able to negotiate taking from them, and now it's our sports complex. We've got multi-use fields there in Tink Park, which is where the Holly Springs Salamanders play. Um, and, and our parks program has really differentiated us and, and created an opportunity for sports and leisure tourism. Um, but demographically, you know, I, I kind of think I, in, in a way, I, I fit what Holly Springs has, um, what a, a lot of the new people that have come here, right? I come from the Northeast. I moved to Holly Springs looking for better and, and cheaper than what it was in Philadelphia. And 10 years after moving here, it's not really any cheaper than it was in the Northeast. I mean, our, a lot of, a lot of things have happened geopolitically and macroeconomically to, to balance that, but it's, it's, you know, when I moved here 10 years ago, it was much different. I could build a house in Holly Springs for, you know, the same money I was gonna spend in Philadelphia for a house that was 30 years old. I'd have to spend $20,000 on a, on a kitchen and a bathroom to make it livable. So, that's what attracted me. And Holly Springs is a town that attracts a lot of young professionals, and we get that because people that are working in RTP at tech companies or biotech companies or pharmaceutical companies, research companies, or in downtown Raleigh at tech companies or other jobs, uh, they're, they're moving to Holly Springs in the suburbs rather than living in those more urbanized areas. Um, you know, so Holly Springs has seen a lot of growth, you know, that way with young professionals. Our, our median age is 35, 35 and a half years old in Holly Springs, and 40% of our population is under the age of 18. So, I talked about, um, parks and recreation programming, and, and that's because 40% of our population is under 18. So, we have a very young population in Holly Springs, and the more and more people that move here, it continues to get younger. Uh, but that doesn't mean that we're, we're aging out our seniors and trying to move them away, because the, we've had to have, find a balance. One of the things we, we're, we're not great at was housing for seniors and really, you know, look, people move here, but then they want to move their parents and their aunts and their uncles, and have everybody next to each other because it's a great place to live. We didn't have that next housing unit maybe for somebody that was retiring or an empty nester and didn't need so much space. So, we've, we've had a couple of developers come in that have built ranch-style homes that are more tailored to empty nesters or retirees. And we've also had our first, uh, a senior living community come into town. It's like a 150-unit, uh, multifamily complex. Think of a cruise ship without the ship. They got all the activities, the shovelboard, the bingo and all that. Um, but they don't have the, you know, the cruise ship. And that's gonna, you know, come into Holly Springs and attract a whole different population of people that aren't those younger folks. So, we've really tried to balance out how we're catering to different, uh, different So we've really tried to balance out how we're catering to different, different sets of our demographics, but by and large, we're a young community and one that we're also fortunate to have a high median income in Holly Springs as well. That drives a lot of our, you know, with the increasing home values that we're experiencing, it drives a lot of the affordability for people to continue to move here as those house prices increase.
Do you know what that median income is?
$112,000.
Wow. Mayor, if I can ask you the same question, I mean, if you were to define either what Matthews is now or what it, what it has become while you've been on council, what would you, how would you define the city?
Sure. Shortly after I got elected to my second term, I did an interview on local NPR station, and he was asking similar, gentleman interviewing, he was asking similar questions. And you know, I, I think what really summarizes how I feel about living in Matthews was this, occurred a couple of years ago when we had a hometown holiday celebration in our downtown, you know, our Newtown Hall. We had, you know, a Christmas tree that was eliminated, there were sparkling lights everywhere, Hazen's folks had installed artificial snow machines, so it was snowing, and there were thousands of people walking around laughing and smiling. And I recall mentioning to my wife, "Isn't this like a Hallmark movie?" I mean, this is just absolutely beautiful, just the laughter and just the happiness that people had in that moment in time. And Matthews has really been identified of late, I think, with a lot of festivals that we have. We have a, something called Beach Fest, and we have Art Fest, and we have Matthews Alive Parade over the Labor Day weekend, that's one of the largest events that attracts several hundred thousand people to Matthews. We have crafts and things like that. So I think that the quality of life here is just really outstanding, and we're walking that balance of trying to maintain what we call here, a common term, I'm sure, a small-town feel with all the growth pressures that we're having. But I think that's really in a nutshell. People, a lot of people here know your neighbors, you can walk down the street and people know who you are. It's a very friendly community, and I think all of these outdoor concerts, Food Truck Friday, just all the opportunities for people, and I should say of all ages. We have many retirement communities here, we also have a very large youth population here. I don't have the exact demographics, but we certainly span the spectrum. And I think there's activities here almost every day for people of all ages to do. So it's the quality of life, that small-town feel that makes Matthews special.
Thank you. And I will also follow what our mayor, Mayor Volk said. I have coached many days on those turf fields down to Matthews, so thank you very much for building them so I didn't have to drive further away for those games.
I have a couple of questions. I think this one is for Mr. Hazen. You had mentioned earlier that you had annexed all of the available property that you were able to annex. And so I guess I wanted to understand what you meant by that. Was that based off of some sort of a growth boundary that you had set with other municipalities surrounding or the county around you? So I was just wondering if you could give me some clarification on that.
Sure. So they, you know, Mecklenburg County, of course, is no longer the largest populated county in the state, but, you know, grew very quickly, and so this, and we only have six towns, right? Six towns in Charlotte, so annexation agreements were, I don't even, I've been here 18 years, so I don't know how long they were set in place, but when I got here, we had our boundary, and then right after I got here, Jim Black was the figure of the house, this was 2003, and he's from Matthews, lived down the street from the then-mayor, and they did a legislative annexation. There's no donut holes, whole towns, you know, there's no requirement for water and sewer. Of course, we got water and sewer because Charlotte water's so big, so that's what happened. But it's 17 square miles and it's not going to get bigger.
So this question is for the Holly Springs folks. I think this is the one. Yes. So you had mentioned that you, whenever you had opportunities to expand or to invest in your water and sewer infrastructure, I just was wondering if you could kind of go into a little bit more depth about what those opportunities looked like for you and then what you chose to do with those?
Sure. So, good question. This predates me a little bit, but as I mentioned, we get our water from Harnett County, Lillington takes it out of the Cape Fear River, and there's been times in our history where they've come to us with excess capacity, and we might not have needed it right at that moment, but we went ahead and purchased the capacity at now looks like fantastic prices, and we locked those prices in for, you know, long periods of time with a CPI adjustment, but we locked in those, that capacity in that plant. So we also have interconnections with our neighbors if we need emergency water, so that, that's very helpful. We've gone through multiple iterations of increasing the size of our wastewater treatment plant, and we're currently looking to do it again, to go from 6 NGD to 8 NGD, and not too far down the road, probably 13 NGD to be able to process, you know, the waste from all the growth we're experiencing. So I'm not sure where Hendersonville gets their water from, but we don't, we don't treat it ourselves, but we have a partner that also serves like the city of Sanford and Fuquay Varina and some other areas in Harnett County, and we've just been fortunate to be able to seize opportunities whenever they present themselves.
What is your tax rate there in Holly Springs? Okay. And another question was, so basically you guys almost doubled in population in 10 years, essentially is what it looks like. And so your, the economic development projects that look to be pretty massive, congratulations by the way on those, they look to be kind of on the exterior boundary of your city. Were those areas that were annexed into your city, or were they already kind of, they took up some of the available land that you already had?
Great, another great question. And some of those recent sites were in our ETJ, and when the project came to be, they were incorporated into the municipal limits. And what we did was we entered into an arrangement with the owners of the property to market their property free of charge for them. Then whenever we get a big well along the line, as we say, you know, that they, they came into our, into our city limits. Does that sort of get to your question there?
Sure does. Yep, thank you.
Site certification was also a big piece of that as well, through the state of North Carolina, making sure it's shovel-ready, a lot of companies like to see that.
Fuji, Fuji's in the business park, so it was kind of land that's been set aside for a long time for only commercial or industrial clean manufacturing type of growth, so there is, you know, our land use plan wouldn't allow anything else in there. And time and time again, we had developers come by that wanted to put in self-storage facilities or even apartments, and it was rejected for 20 years because the town had set this land aside for the purpose of, you know, commercial growth. Then Fuji came along and really consumed the bulk of what was left of our business park. And Daniel talked about, you know, our partnership with Duke Energy earlier. Where Amgen is going was another three or 400-acre tract that a private entity, one of our partners in a number of these projects, was able to buy from Duke Energy and then go and market it for something like Amgen, and we could fit two or three more Amgens on that same site where Amgen is going to go because we were able to work with Duke Energy and work with a private partner to again, market that piece and then hopefully continue, you know, recruiting economic development opportunities.
Thank you.
Any other counsel? Go ahead, Lindsey.
I have one, well, I have two questions. One is a quick question. So Holly Springs, I know that you have your own economic development department within the city. Do you have a countywide organization that's also trying to attract development, or is that what you created, your own?
No, we, we do have a county one. And it's, look, I mean, we, we had a lot of big projects, but it's not all because of us. I mean, we do have a really, really, really strong economic development team. Daniel's a part of that, but we wouldn't be able to do it without Wake County Economic Development, without the North Carolina Biotechnology Center, which is a state-run entity, and then also the Commerce Department have all been strong partners. But those higher-level partners, like if we were going up against Morrisville within Wake County for the same project, the county's going to offer one cent of incentives and everybody's on equal playing field. We may be able to differentiate against each other, but they don't get involved usually, correct me if I'm wrong, until it's about one town or one city left in the county, and then they start getting a little bit heavier-handed in their economic development policies. And the state is the same way, time and time again. You know, we've competed against Texas or Ohio or other places, but we've also competed against Wilson and, you know, Matthews maybe one time, or somewhere else we've competed against other projects and Concord, I'm sorry, I was in Miss Concord. And the state doesn't come in until, again, there's one certified, or not certified, but one selected site within the state, and the state will come in with a heavier hand. So we, we have our own economic development department to drive those relationships, create opportunities with site selectors, make sure people know that we're out here, that leads them to Holly Springs, and they come check out some of the available land that we have, they go back to their clients and talk about it. But then it's all of those different partners coming together to try and make it happen, so it's very multifaceted. If I add anything.
Right, thank you. And then can you elaborate more about the fiber network that you mentioned and sort of how that came to be and what that process looked like for you?
Sure. So going back in the memory bank here a few years, we hired a firm out of DC called, and I can get you all this information, CTC, and they walked us through, they drew the plans out, we wanted to connect all of our governmental facilities with a fiber optic network. And we're going to get way above my head really quickly here, but we put in 288 strands of fiber, much of which was dark fiber. It's real cheap to put in dark fiber, the cost, I think, is in the manpower, the, you know, to get it in the ground. And what's happened now is, is a company out of Canada called Ting, T-I-N-G, Ting Internet, they have approached the town in years past, and they have leased some of the dark fiber for their own purposes, so now town's getting some revenue off that as well, as well as serving all of our governmental facilities and increased our bandwidth speeds, you know. If we had to go to the private sector, back then it was Time Warner Cable, to get the same capacities we have now, I have no clue what those costs would be, but it was a great, great investment at the time.
Okay, thank you.
All the questions from council. So gentlemen, I have one more question for each of you, and I would ask that if you would speak to this question, and it's a pretty simple question, from your specific role, so obviously staff, if you would answer the question from your perspective, and it'd be helpful to our staff and to myself, and then elected officials, as you would speak from your role as elected officials for the, for our council, what would be one thing that we should be doing? You know, if you had to give the ultimate piece of advice, what would be the one thing that we should be doing in your mind? So maybe start with Mayor Pro Tim Berry and Daniel in Holly Springs, and then we'll jump over to Mayor Higdon and Hazen from Matthews.
John, would it be possible for me to go first? I have a hard stop at 5:30.
Oh, yes, sir. Absolutely. Yes, sir, absolutely.
I guess if I had one piece of advice, and I've touched on it a few times, is I would make sure that your decisions, and this is coming from an elected official, make sure that all of your decisions don't adversely affect the quality of life in your town. And, you know, we've all been bitten by unintended consequences of decisions made in the past, so, you know, maintaining that quality of life, making sure that Hendersonville remains an outstanding place to live, you know, just protect that, it's so very important. And I guess that would be it. That's what I, you know, all the decisions that we make as a town council, we really try to delve deep, we ask a lot of questions and look, always making sure that the quality of life here remains paramount, and we don't do anything to detract from that. That would be my advice.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize, I have to leave a little early, but it was nice meeting you all, and come see us in Matthews sometimes, I'd love to take you out to dinner or something.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right, Hazen, what do you think?
That's a good question, John. I mean, you know, there's so many assets that y'all have already. I think, for me, I think people are going to want to get out, and Henderson's got good weather too, so I think folks, I think to give people the option of getting out of their cars, I think that's going to become more important over time. You know, people can hate it if you put a greenway in their backyard, but that makes their house more valuable. So I think that's what I would try to do, is get away from such a car-centric community, and, you know, you guys got a lot of great buildings down there. I think that would be my one, one thing.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Berry and Daniel?
Sure. I think, you know, I'll say a couple, a couple of different things into one answer. The first thing is if you haven't, you know, updated your comprehensive land use plan, take the time to do that, you know, it's worth, and I'm not a big fan of consultant fees, I feel like every other meeting we're getting more consultants on board to do things, and the costs just keep going up in this economy, but it's worth it. And you get your plans updated, get your vision outlined, set a strategic plan for the town. We didn't have one of those until 2018, but it really gets the council together, and we outline a set of, a set of priorities and a vision that we have for our town, and then that acts as a document for our manager to go and put financial resources behind it from the budgeting process. So we just had our retreat, we affirmed our strategic plan, they'll come back to us in April with, with the official document that will go into the May budget cycle, into June for adoption and et cetera. But a strategic plan is critical to set staff on the right direction for what you all want to achieve, and then secondarily, your land use planning, if you're being overrun with growth, spend the time to get that right, make sure it reflects the vision that you have for your, for your town or your city. The second thing I would say, and it kind of, you know, Mayor Higdon said it, said it well, but I'll say it a little bit differently, don't be afraid to tell developers no. If you're getting pushed by developers, you're getting a lot of interest from them, what we've done in Holly Springs to try and get a better handle on the growth and the development is really make the developers come to us early and often in the process, and by us, I mean the elected officials. I spend more of my time as an elected official, meeting with developers that want to come into Holly Springs to introduce their projects or float a rezoning, and these are all legislative things, right? They're not quasi-judicial topics that you can't talk about outside the setting, they're legislative matters. And we have then the opportunity to say, "In this part of town, you know what? We need that sidewalk, or we need that greenway connection, or what about a connection to our park over here, or how about this off-site road improvement because you're going to add, you know, 200 homes is going to bring this many more cars and create this much traffic, and our residents aren't going to like that if we don't have the right roads to support it." We got very tough with developers and set the bar high, and it hasn't stopped the growth. They, they meet the demands and they do it willingly to try and be in Holly Springs, and part of that comes with the financial reward they get, but also because they want to be good stewards, at least the ones that want to partner with us want to be good partners, they want to be good stewards of our community, and they want their projects to be represented well. So don't be afraid to push back and make sure that you're getting your vision outlined and getting what your objectives are solidified with the development community to drive the outcomes that you desire.
Thank you.
Honestly, I would echo what Mayor Tim, Mayor Pro Tim Berry just said. I'm answering this from the standpoint of hearing that development is on your doorstep, it's, it's coming, it's not going to go away, you're a very desirable place, so you might as well shape it like Mayor said and get what, what you want. So two things, you know, I mentioned system development fees. If development is coming, make sure you have an appropriate system development fee in place to where those developers are paying their fair share for future investments in your infrastructure. And also, here in Holly Springs, developers can either dedicate open space, parks and recreation land, or they can pay a fee in lieu. Historically, looking back 10, 15, 20 years ago, there's a number of instances where the town accepted substandard parks and recreation land. It's swamp land, it's not good for development. We've got a few different areas in town that I can think of right now where it's like, "Man, I wish we could go back and redo that," because it's land that's just, it's just sitting there, it's not going to be developed for a long time. So either demand that you get good parks and recreation land, good open space land, or that the fee option that I think developers are able to pay under the statutes.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for your time. I'll open it one more, Mayor, anybody, any other questions? I do take personal privilege to say, Hazen, again, congratulations, thank you for your counsel through the years, your leadership and the manager community will be missed, so just congratulations and don't be a stranger.
Thanks, John. Love, love working with you.
I just want to say thank you all for taking your time to help us as we start our planning process here for this particular year. Wish you all the best and hope to see you sometime back in your territories.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck with your retreat.
Thank you. Mayor Volk, I will look over at Brent Detwiler and we have 32 minutes.
I have 42 slides.
So Brent, we have 32 minutes to talk about, but this is an item that came up at a couple of meetings ago, and I'll turn it over to Brent to talk about intersections around the city and a study that NC DOT completed for us. So, thank you. It should be up there on the...
Is this the fancy one?
Yes, the fancy one. I can't wait for you to show Jerry how it works.
And it should work at...
There it goes.
There we go. All right, let me go back here. Okay, so NC DOT, in the last year and a half or so, has been on a drive, this is part of a pilot program, they hired VHB Engineering to complete a pedestrian safety study. They've been doing these around the state in mid-sized cities and it's created to address continued increases in pedestrian fatalities and serious injuries from motor vehicle crashes. And unfortunately, we were chosen as a priority city because we are overrepresented, overrepresented with severe injury and fatal pedestrian crashes based on total number of crashes and the per capita pedestrian crashes within our city limits. And this is looking back over the last 10 years of data. And the primary objective of the study was to kind of look at all the data and to develop mostly near-term infrastructure projects that could address specific deficiencies in, in Hendersonville. And these, it's important to note on the last section there that these may be, they're not, they don't have any costs associated with them, so you'll see that here later. They did not develop any estimates and they didn't prioritize anything, so it's kind of up to us and, you know, we've kind of been asked to kind of summarize this and go through it. So we'll, we'll be presenting a lot of information here in a, in a short period of time. So these could be candidate projects for safety funding if it's available through DOT, potentially, you know, working through the MPO as well, through NC DOT activities that they may already be doing, resurfacing or some of their projects that are in the STIP. And the, obviously, this was from the consultant, city's encouraged also to integrate concepts into our local capital projects. And you'll see some of that here in a second. I'll kind of skim through this fast. This was a group, a stakeholder effort, so it was driven by DOT, their consultant, they, we had several meetings, or they had several meetings with the city, with Henderson County, with Apple, Apple Country Transit, with Blue Ridge Bicycle Club, Pardee, there were a number of stakeholders that were involved in the process. And then the project team, basically, they, they gathered all of the existing conditions, did some of their own field observation, looked at crash data, and then they finalized a report, they, they kind of, what, they checked in, John, maybe twice, I think, along the way, presented some feed, or got some feedback based on their presentation, and then submitted the final report in September of 2021. So this is what they determined as far as a crash density, and this was over the last, or well, about a 10-year period, 2010 to 2019. And this, these were reported as pedestrian, as a failure to yield pedestrian or, or most of these were pedestrian failure to yield or motorist left turn, but these were pedestrian crashes and it's basically a heat map. It shows you that the areas are downtown, downtown, east out on 64 and Spartanburg Highway, as well as a little bit up on Asheville Highway. So from that, they developed priority areas that they would focus on, and that's what these next series of slides will show you. So area number one, like I said, is US 64, number two is downtown, and number three is Spartanburg Highway, US 176. The red stars were where they focused most of their energy and blue represent projects that DOT already had in their hopper. And so this is section one or area one on that last slide, so it's, this is US 64. Apologize for the, the roads are so light, you can't really see them on there. So the first area that they looked at, Howard Gap, not Howard's Gap, but Howard Gap and Highland Square, you can see on here, so each of these slides that has the aerial that it shows the lights, the, the traffic lights, and the red lines represent existing pedestrian crossings. So this particular area, the observation was, and you'll, this is kind of a common theme on these roads, these particular roads, but high vehicle speeds, so if you have a pedestrian crash, it will likely be severe or fatal, unfortunately. And in this particular instance, the only marked crossing is at Howard Gap, so it's up Blue Ridge Health, and I'll, whoops, sorry, wrong button, up here. And I'll show you here in the next slide what that looks like, I'm sure you're familiar with it already. Most pedestrian crossings observed, this was from their fieldwork, but most of the pedestrian crossing, crossings were observed at Highland Square Drive, so going into Walmart and Sam's and those, that retail and restaurants, and Howard Gap Road Intersections. And one of their, another observation is no existing lighting north of the I-26 interchange. Recommendations coming out of this section include pedestrian crossings that signalize the intersections and additional lighting between I-26 and Howard Gap. So this is just an example, this is, Blue Ridge Health is over here. So does anybody see an issue with the way these crosswalks are laid out? So basically, there's...
Where do you go when you get to the...
Yeah, where do you go when you get there, right? So this isn't connected to a sidewalk, there's no sidewalk here, there's a pedestrian pole or a signal pole, and then down this on, on the other side here by the church entrance, but there is a sidewalk here, but there's no, no curb ramp or detectable warning plates or anything like that. So that's kind of a common theme that, that the consultant kind of put together in the report. And I'll let you know that on this, this particular project, DOT actually has this one in their hopper, might be a year or so out, but it's actually been identified at least at the Howard Gap intersection, which the irony is the Howard Gap reconstruction has happened since I've been here, so in the last 10 years. So this is fairly recent and it's kind of unfortunate the way it was set up, but they have programmed some safety funds to try to clean this up, but again, it may not, probably won't happen for at least another year or so. Blue Ridge Mall, this is, so these, these letters that you see on here represent, are the sections that were on that, the original layout map. So these are all on US 64. At Blue Ridge Mall, you recall, we actually did a project several years ago that had federal funds, it was administered through City of Asheville. But we, we provided, the city actually installed as part of that contract, the only pedestrian crossing across US 64 in this stretch. So that is one of the big takeaways from this, is you have all of these intersections without pedestrian signals or crosswalks. And the consultant witnessed people crossing at Thompson Street and Freeman Street, and obviously you've got Interfaith Alliance Ministries or Assistance Ministry right there, and you've got the mall, and you've got retail and whatnot on the other side.
Yeah, Brent, I think the city council got a letter regarding crossing over 64 just this week, I think.
Okay. So, yeah, and unfortunately, going back to that real quick, unfortunately, we were very limited, we were able to do a lot with the limited funds that we had on that project, so we actually had to kind of prioritize. So that's why we didn't end up, ideally, that project, we would have gotten some sidewalks in on both sides of the street, maybe done some crossings, some additional pedestrian crossings, but we pretty much did what we could with the funds that were available. That was a grant. So this is section two, so this is focused on downtown, what they're considering downtown. So basically downtown, out a little bit of 64 and 7th Avenue, and then west of downtown along US 64, and then a little bit north of town up to Patton Park on Asheville Highway. So this is D on that previous map, so 7th Avenue, obviously, some of this will be cleaned up with the streetscape project that we're working on, but 7th Avenue, important corridor, many pedestrian destinations, and the, the critical thing with 7th Avenue is everybody knows it provides a nice parallel pedestrian experience for folks, so, you know, because there is no pedestrian experience for folks on US 64 in that stretch. So this is, this is actually very critical here. And some, a couple of the other observations, the greenway crossing is uncontrolled, it's in a curve. The Ash Street, Harris Street intersection is an important connector down, down here between neighborhoods north of 64 and south. Excuse me. The recommendations for this area, consistent pedestrian crosswalk markings and signal head installations, informalize some of the painted curb extensions. Again, we'll be cleaning that up, at least in this area for now, and then future phases of 7th Avenue, hopefully we'll be able to do that in the future. So this is an area of focus that they, that the consultant decided to look at a little bit more in depth and provide various scenarios that, that we and DOT, mostly DOT, but we could provide feedback to DOT or try to get, try to push to get some of these projects in. So in this particular stretch, they're looking from Grove over to Church, and they've developed several scenarios. Again, I'll, I'll move a little quickly, or a little more quickly. This is scenario one and two, so here's an issue, or they've listed some issues here. Has anybody here had issues at this intersection in a vehicle?
Yes.
I've actually been hit at the intersection in a vehicle, thank God, not as a pedestrian, but in a vehicle, and was nearly hit just a couple months ago. But pattern of red light running, crashes, most pedestrians cross on the north leg, so up here where there are no pedestrian signal heads, and the westbound left turn lane conflicts, and there's visibility issues here if they're turning quickly onto King, or from King onto 7th, sorry. So one of the recommendations for this scenario was to provide a protected northbound left turn lane, which is basically a red arrow or a dedicated arrow, and also provide what's called a leading pedestrian interval or LPI, you'll see that acronym used throughout. So what that is, is basically you time the light or the light is timed so it stays red, so it gives the pedestrian, pedestrians kind of a head start to cross and complete their crossing before the light turns. So this is at US 64 and Church. Some of the issues and observations, there's a pattern, once again, similar to King, there's a pattern of red light running crashes and angle crashes, heavy turning movement, movement from 7th onto Church, and that, once again, they recommended providing a leading pedestrian interval. Potential future improvements include a protected left turn phase and tighter turn radii or curb extension to slow vehicles down. This is the third scenario that they looked at, and you'll see some familiarities here. It, so this is Grove Street, and you'll see on the overhead, it's obviously, it's a complex intersection, sorry, with a long crossing here of US 64, so you're crossing three wide lanes of traffic, and it's slightly angled, so it's a little weird that way, too. There's a pattern of rear end crashes and wrong way crashes with vehicles turning right onto 64 from Grove, and most pedestrians walk, walk along the north leg, which is off the screen, but I'll show you here in a second. And there's no buffer between the sidewalks and major roads. So their recommendation coming out of this is remove the 7th Avenue section west of North Grove. So remove this, so you can see this is, this is before, this is existing, these are their proposed, or their proposed plan view, if you will. So they're proposing to close off that, kind of that dedicated lane there, add a narrow island so that you can sort of see here, so that's the yellow here, so add a narrow island to enforce right in, right out movement to North Grove, and this simplifies vehicular and non-motorized travel through, through the intersection. Obviously, our 7th Avenue streetscape project picks up right here, and we did that project in conjunction with, or not in conjunction, but with DOT's approval. We did not get into anything in here, you know, right now, this is where DOT's mast arm is. This is a screenshot from the plan, from the 7th Avenue plan. So basically, we are incorporating a bit of a, you know, this, this was a recommendation from VHB, kind of a, an island, if you will, or a little median there, and here we're including a little bit of median, but a lot of this, this is where our project basically picks up, so the 7th Avenue project. So a lot of what VHB showed was work that would be done there. So also in this kind of downtown area, they looked at Asheville Highway and high vehicular speeds on North Main, traveling north of the high school and near the trail crossing, the Aqualaha Crossing, confusing vehicle and pedestrian movements at the intersection. I'll get into some details, more details on this right here. So this is North Main, 9th Avenue, and US 25. So the yellow represent kind of existing pedestrian movements, the red were the, I think the red or drive entrances that they're...
That's a very old picture.
It is.
That is not what it looks like, man.
Right, right, you'll, you'll see in a second. They'll show you, this is more what it looks like now. Well, I mean, the aerial's not up to date, but this is, this is actually here.
There you go.
So this was a, this was a plan view, this probably looks super familiar, this is like all of the DOT kind of concept plans that they released, but VHB did this as part of the report, so they took a detailed look at this whole intersection. And what they did as well, and obviously, we, you know, the city has some work going on, or that will be going on here for the fire station, but they recommended narrowing Main and Church to two lanes south of this intersection and north is pointed to the right. And this design shows a two-way separated bike lane, so that's, it's a little hard to see here, but the, how does the, oh, there you go. So that red, those two red lines, parallel red lines represent a two-way bike lane or a bike lane in general. So you can see what they're proposing there is, is narrowing the street there to two lanes, and they're kind of doing the same here along King and widening it out.
The bearing to the two lanes, the part you just showed, would that take away all on-street parking on 25 across from the fire department?
Up here? Well, I don't know what I just did there.
That was exciting.
Up in this...
Does that take away parking spaces?
No, I believe the green line, and again, I didn't develop this, but the green line, I believe, kind of shows the, the edge of travel, basically, the edge line of the travel. So they're showing two lanes going through, and I believe that's keeping the dawn street parking, you know, backing up to the field, that's what you're talking about, yeah.
Okay.
And again, this was their concept and... And again, this was their concept, and next slide, I'll show you, this is just a larger version of that. So you can see, they, they took it all the way back to, to the triangle stop here, and the, and 7th, or, yeah, 7th Avenue, and, you know, are kind of carrying through their concept throughout. So this obviously would be a big project.
And they're also creating a left-hand turn into the high school, with that purple line?
Yes, yes.
Currently, you're not supposed to be able to do that. That doesn't mean people don't do it, but you're not supposed to be able to do it.
Okay, okay. This is, well, somebody needs to tell DOT this. This is actually DOT's plan that they have developed. This is about a 95% plan. It incorporates a couple of things in, in this area, or several of the things, that, you know, it kind of extends this, this median area, and tries to help with the pedestrian experience here. It's a little hard to see here, but these are, these are curb ramps, so that oval there is a curb ramp. So this would go, they're not showing the striping, but this would go through here, and this would be a ref, kind of a refuge island.
Can I ask a question with that picture right there?
Mm-hmm.
So is DOT going to allow people coming from North Main back into town to come across that intersection and turn into the high school? And I know that's hard to, yep, that right there.
Yeah.
Are they going to allow that?
That's what it looks like now.
I mean, like, signal that. The reason I say that...
I haven't seen the signal plan. This is actually all I've seen as far as DOT's...
Okay, just because, once again...
We can ask.
That happens, and, you know, at times, when you're turning right into the school, and all of a sudden, there's somebody coming off your left that you had no idea was coming.
Sure.
That's just, I mean, that happens sometimes.
Sure. Yeah, those are all definitely questions we can ask, and I reached out to, I haven't heard back from them, but I reached out to figure out what the timeframe was for this. I, I think they said at one point this summer, but I don't know if they're still on track for that. Any other questions on this?
Okay.
This is also in the downtown, this was not in the report. You've seen this before. You saw it, or some of you have seen it before. This is what we asked Kimberly Horn to put together, and this actually shows, north is going the other direction here, north is to the left, but this is King from 4th to, or 2nd to 4th. And this actually shows the, the removal of a lane there, and it's showing two through lanes to increase the pedestrian experience, or make, for a better pedestrian experience here, and connecting downtown to east, directly east of downtown. Kimberly Horn put this together for us. It's a concept. We presented it to DOT, and I threw this in here to just give you all some more, more information. And DOT has asked for us, at one point, we did have approval to remove the, remove a lane here, and actually do on-street parking. This was several years ago, and we got a letter from DOT saying that was okay. They would like us to redo that traffic impact analysis, so we are asking Kimberly Horn to do that, in order to, to see how, to double-check and make sure that DOT's on board with this, would be on board with this concept. US 64 west of downtown, so observations, pedestrian crossings between Blythe and Justice, concerns about vehicle speeds, large distance between controlled crossings, that's what you can see from the dimensions that are shown on here, whited and oak are frequent pedestrian routes between neighborhoods and south of 64 and the schools, and future Acusta trail crossing west of the city along 64, that's well west of here. Recommendations, manage speeds along the corridor, make geometric improvements at uncontrolled crossings, remove, or review bus stop locations, and provide consistent crosswalk markings. This was, again, another concept that came out of their plan at, at Oak, North Oak and 64, so everybody's familiar with this, with the Health Sciences Center. The offset intersection, obviously, is a challenged, challenge, the crosswalks are, you know, multiple marked crosswalks, and so they limited site distance. They came up with some recommendations, remove the middle crosswalk, upgrade other existing crosswalks to a high-visibility pattern, install pedestrian refuge island at both crosswalks across 6th, and install pavement markings to visually narrow the road near the intersection and indicate how drivers should navigate here. So that's what these, these various colored lines represent. And so this was their, VHB's recommendation, and if you recall, this was done back in, I've got notes on here, I think it was done in 13 or 14, maybe, maybe more recent than that. But we, we had asked Kimberly Horn to look at this, I believe it was called the 9th Avenue Circulation Study, and so these are just some clips out of that study. So this is, just to kind of show you the comparison, so these were some options that Kimberly Horn came up with at that time, and then, in compared, you know, which includes, you know, up to a, up to and including a roundabout, as well as in, you know, realigning the road and doing a full-blown intersection. And then, so what VHB ended up with was kind of a little bit like this, only with, with refuge islands here and here. So I'll go back to that real quick. So you can see, this is their concept, and this, these, again, were where Kimberly Horn stood. So the last section, Section 3, is the Spartanburg Highway area, and so this is the first area. If you all haven't seen this, this is the, I think, I think you have, I think DOT presented this at one point with the roundabout, but this is the South Main White Street project that DOT is currently designing. I believe they're at about 75 to 90% in design. Observations, marked crosswalks and pedestrian signal heads on the north and east legs, potential future trail crossing north of the intersection. So the railroad tracks are up in here, so that would be the future Acusta. And then these are the two DOT numbers for the, don't ask me why, but they have two different numbers for the projects, 5886 and 6049, for white and, and South Main, respectively. And then the recommendations that VHB had is remove, or review, sorry, review the channelized northbound turn lanes, which are here, so if you can make that out, so this, these turn lanes. So just review those for opportunities to improve pedestrian safety. So whenever you have kind of a, what could be a continuous turn lane, it makes it a real challenge for pedestrians to cross. And then review the extent of planned median along 176 East toward Chadwick. So this is the next section, and they, they reviewed, and I'll show you some, some visuals from these intersections. So they basically looked at these intersect, each of these intersections, and provided some feedback or recommendations, some scenarios based on that. General observations, prevalence of stores, commercial development, many driveways, and poor access management, pattern of frontal impacts, crashes, and no signal or pedestrian crossings between Grove and Ingles, so approximately half a mile between pedestrian crossings of 176. This is at Chadwick, a pattern of frontal impact crashes, these are their observations, large number of left turns, or westbound vehicles from Spartanburg Highway onto Chadwick, most pedestrians traveling across north leg of intersection. You can see they, they were doing, that's the Chick-fil-A there, so they were doing these observations about a year or so ago. This is at Nelson Street-Balsam Road, several pedestrians were seen crossing and walking along the sidewalk, pattern of frontal impact crashes, and heaviest pedestrian activity along US, 176 is east-west. And this is at South Grove, several pedestrians seen crossing and walking along 176. And I know you all have heard from, and we have, I believe, they've come to council meetings, folks as, asking and begging for increased pedestrian access and improvements along South Grove and across the intersection. I can tell you that, reach out to the NPO and to DOT, and they are due to complete some intersection improvements at this intersection this July, and that will be ahead of, we also have a project through DOT in the works to, to install sidewalks on both sides of South Grove. So that'll be a nice, that'll be kind of a checkbox off of the list of things that, that this safety study pointed out. This was the focus area, and again, this shows the, the distance between intersections and, and crossing pedestrian crossings. And again, these, these red lines represent existing pedestrian crossings, so you've got, you know, 2,000 feet between crossings there, and the one at South Grove certainly isn't very safe currently. So this was, so they came up with some various alternatives, and we've been told from the NPO that there could be some funding available for, to study some of these further, so if that is of interest, we can, we can talk through that a little bit more with the NPO. So this is alternative 1, would be to construct a raised median from South Grove to Ingles, and would create a right-turn exit only for Chadwick, Nelson, and South Balsam. It provides a refuge space for crossing pedestrians. So that was one alternative. This is the second alternative. It's a much shorter median, but construct a raised median between the existing signal and Balsam. And then this was the third, which is an even, kind of a hybrid, or not a hybrid, but a kind of a variation of that last one, which, with a shorter, you know, this represents the median, and then this would just be striped.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Are they committed to maintaining those as lighted intersections, as opposed to converting them to roundabouts?
They have not, I mean, the consultant didn't look at a roundabout options for, you mean for these, or are you talking about...
For those specifically on Spartanburg Highway.
I, to my knowledge, I can ask, but I don't know that they've looked at the option of including roundabouts here.
Because the thing is, is that a lot of the issues are speed, and, so you can, I mean, roundabouts basically give an opportunity to slow a speed and to redirect, as opposed to people just continually running red lights, which happens all the time on Spartanburg Highway. And I feel like a roundabout helps to kind of move traffic in a safer, slower pattern.
Sure.
And they're less expensive, right, than lighted intersections?
They are, I think it depends on the amount of land that they might have to apply for the rent, you know, as the round, in particular, here, when you have two lanes in each direction, east and west, and then you'll have some other, you know, especially maybe here, you know, I don't know where we would be looking at one in particular, but, you know, here or at the existing light, you know, it could get quite large, you know, because you, you'll have to have two lanes continue through, which is similar to what they're proposing up at the south end of town.
Plus, that picture's dated as well.
This one?
That is not what that corner looks like now.
Right.
You don't have the two drive-through lines for Chick-fil-A on there.
Right.
So a, no, I'm serious. So I mean, so if you, if you use a roundabout, you'd eat up at least one of those lanes, I would assume, but I don't know how, how much it would take.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I can ask. I'll ask VHB if they looked at that, or if that's something that was outside the scope. And then this is just the last, this was the last section. So this is from, basically from Grove out to Upward Road, and their recommendations out of here were basically just to review the signal crossing time at Brooklyn, and review bus stop placement, which is obviously something that could be coordinated with, would be coordinated with Henderson County. Oh, I lied, there is one more. So this is signal crossing time and potential future improvements, I believe at Upward. It's, it's not real clear on the picture, but I believe they're talking about it at Upward here. Which, again, the irony is, the Upward project has happened within the last 10 years. And I'm right at the end, I'm sorry, but I'll, I'll run through these here real quick, but these are very, they came up with some citywide recommendations. I won't read through all these, but basically, you'll see the LPI, so add leading pedestrian intervals at downtown intersections, especially with a higher pedestrian exposure across that part of the study area. Tourists, older pedestrians are less familiar with the environment, and maybe slower to cross. Retiming some of the signals downtown, that was one of their recommendations, curb ramps and accessibility improvements, specifically on the roads like King, one-way roads like King, Church, 6th and 7th, and adding pedestrian countdown signal heads and marked crosswalks at all signalized intersections that they basically identified in the plan. And since then, or maybe concurrently with that, we've, I know John has forwarded some other requests from folks, in particular, a request for install audio notification at our pedestrian crossings. I've reached out to DOT to talk, or to see what the feasibility of that is. Can it happen? How they have the original, or the, the existing signals? What's the cost? Can they program that in? And, you know, this, the, the folks that submitted that email, I know, brought up a very good point, you know, prevalence of electric vehicles, they tend to be silent, and more and more of those you get, it's, it's really hard for a visually impaired person to, to be able, because they're, they're trained to pick up on the audio, right, of the, of the vehicle, or of vehicles, so they know that it's safe to cross. And then citizen request for better pedestrian crossings of Haywood Road, 191, and this was in particular, I believe, at Orleans and Kensington. And I think most of that focus of that request was about vehicular intersection concerns, but I'll be the first to admit, you know, there aren't good pedestrian crossings right now, from the north side of 191 to the south side. Obviously, we have the sidewalk on the south side of 191. That was not identified as part of this survey, but again, they, they looked at where pedestrian crashes and fatalities had happened. So, questions?
So, so, thank you, Brent. We wanted to share that with you. I know it had come up a couple of meetings ago, and the mayor had asked to see it, so we wanted to share it with you. I know we're a little bit past our 6 o'clock hour, so I, I hope that both presentations were beneficial tonight, particularly hearing from your peers. Hopefully, that will help you, and the idea is with, that as we go into the retreat on March 11th, and even this information clearly plays into part of discussion, as we get into the second half of the retreat on the 11th, we'll be talking about transportation issues, and road improvement projects, and those kind of things. So these play all, you know, these things all come together, and so, things to be thinking about that you may want to ask our experts that are being part of the panel here, as part of your retreat on the 11th. So how do we get these things funded? How, you know, how do we get them prioritized? Those kind of things. So, so, and hopefully, I will say that the five questions that, that I asked, or the four questions I asked the panelists were the four questions they had in advance. So if they said anything that sounded like something that came out of my mouth, it did not, I did not plant that at all. So that was completely on what they said. So I appreciate that. So, that's all I have.
All right. We could spend a whole lot of time talking about all this right now, but we've had time to be needed, so I'll pick it up another time.
So we are adjourned.
So we are adjourned.